O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I move adjourn the closed session, second.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye, here.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Chaner?
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of do interviews for the appointed boards and commissions, Historic Preservation Commission, Adam Fulton. Adam, come on up, tell us why you want to serve.
You're the one. Afternoon. I've served on the commission before for quite a long time, took a little time off and I enjoyed it and I want to come back to continue preserving history in Sioux City.
Appreciate you taking the time.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Human Rights Commission, Billy O'Dare. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. I'm currently on the commission. My term is coming to an end and I've enjoyed doing the job, the camaraderie with all the commission members and the staff. It's a wonderful job. I'd like to keep doing what I'm doing. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. I've seen you at plenty of events. You're very active on the commission, so you're a good addition to it.
Yeah, it's a wonderful job. It's a great way to serve, meet new people, get into the community. So I enjoy what I do there.
I appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was also going to be Teresa Herbert, she couldn't show?
Correct.
Okay.
She's rescheduled for next week, I believe.
We'll go to the consent agenda, which today is items three through 15G, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. You want to speak on an item, please come up as I read the item, state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up on your citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the city council minutes of June 27, 2022. Four is a resolution adopting the second quarter supplement to the municipal code. Five is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment action. Six are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on July 20 for the River Kate Parade. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in downtown area August 20th and 21st for the Shotgun Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club Support the Blue fundraiser. Seven are actions relating to civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. B is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Natalia's Bakery for violation of the beer and wine and liquor laws. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the West Third Street and West Street Intersection Improvements Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the South Bridge Business Cold Link Rail Spur Project. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to engineered controls for preventive maintenance on equipment at the Rivers Edge Heritage Discovery and MLK Parking Ramps. B is a resolution authorizing negotiations with payment test to formulate a contract for payment gateway services. C is a resolution approving amendment number one to the administrative services agreement with Mission Square Retirement to increase the participant fee. D is a resolution approving the financial services agreement with Piper Sadler for the financial advisory services. E is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom to maintain underground cable of West Sixth Street Corridor to supply fiber facilities. F is a resolution approving a contract to mark albanishes for the Northern Valley Crossing Regional Storm Water Improvement Project. G is a resolution approving a contract to INA Construction for the annual storm inlet repair project. H is a resolution approving a settlement mutual release and hold harmless agreement regarding claims. I is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Musco Lighting to provide a mini pitch system modular sports solution at Riverside Park. G is a resolution approving amendment number one to the service provider agreement for Thompson Electric decreasing the not to exceed amount and amending the scope of service. And I need to abstain on that, please. Ten are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to mark albanishes for the boat ramp parking lot and trail repair project. B is a resolution approving a payment to RP Constructors for the 41st Street Storm Sewer Project. C is a resolution authorizing payment to Interstate Mechanical for the removal and replacement of the pump and motor at Lewis Pool. I need to abstain on that. D is a resolution authorizing payment to MTC Mechanical for the whole chunk to Heritage Parking Ramp Skywalk Upgrade Improvements. I need to abstain on that. Eleven are actions relating to property. A is a resolution accepting a lease from IDOT for the parking lot and drive area at Chris Larson Park Road. B is a resolution proposing to grant a gas and regulator station easement to Mid-America property located at 2899 Stone Park Boulevard. C is a resolution accepting a warranty deed for the Bishop Heelands Catholic Schools and authorizing payment property in the area of Grandview Boulevard, 13th and 17th Street. Twelve, purchasing is a resolution awarding, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Casbor All-Terrain Vehicles for track snow grooming vehicle.
I had a couple of questions about that one. Whoever wants to come on.
Matt or Spiro or both.
Exactly. And actually, if both of you want to come up, just because it might be different parts of the question.
I actually looked these up. They're pretty cool.
So I was wondering, first off, if we thought the price point was kind of in line with what they cost. I know we reached out to multiple vendors and things like that, but is this in line with what they cost? Or is there a reason we don't know why the others didn't reply?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, it was in line with the cost. We had $250,000 budgeted.
Is what we thought.
And that was a year ago, so things have gone up since then.
Yeah.
There's really only two providers for this type of equipment, and I'm not sure why Print Off didn't.
We reached out. We sent them the information and tried contacting them and did not hear back.
Okay. No worries. The other one that I, the other question I was going to ask, I didn't know we had a groomer. What do we use this mostly for? Is it mostly comb park?
Yeah, comb park. Just exclusively comb park.
Because the other thing I was going to ask about is if we had thought about expanding its usage or if it is pretty well tied up. Because I mean, I don't know if it's possible. I doubt it with the mountain biking trail system. If we wanted to do some cross-country stuff or even, I mean, in Okoboji, we use them all the time on the bike trails so that people can snowmobile or cross-country ski.
Yeah, I would like to look into that because this is, will be a smaller unit than the one that we currently have. It'll make it a little bit easier.
Might be able to do trails.
A little narrower.
We want to look into it, yeah, because the
This one is big.
Yeah, the one that we have currently is huge. Yeah, this one will be a little more concise.
Okay.
Something we can look into.
It just got me thinking that, yeah, I mean, that's, that we've used them in different capacities, or I'm familiar with that at least, for snowmobiling or cross-country skiing. And hey, if you're going to be up on a hill and not able to use your mountain bike, if there's an opportunity there too.
With the new mountain bike.
Exactly.
Yeah, there'll be maybe some opportunities to groom those trails.
Cool.
To drag some snow over.
If we get enough snow, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
Spiro, any idea what the used one would be going for on auction? Do you get to set the starting point?
I think C and G could probably answer that better.
Yeah, because I have a question on that, because the tractor that I asked why we didn't at least get a trade price brought 9,000, well, 80, I'll give you the benefit of the up-doubt, it brought 88,000 less than what you told, 8,200 less than what you thought it would bring.
Travis Bodak, Fleet Supervisor, that is, it's a very specialty item. When I looked online, I didn't find any used ones. So I don't have a value of what it's going to bring.
I think we might have better luck if we shop it to some of our contacts if they're open to that.
But I don't understand why you guys don't bid that and ask what you think, have them bid it both ways. I don't get that. Because we left 8,000 bucks on the table from what we thought we would get for trade and what that tractor sold for, the same thing's going to happen here, I can almost guarantee you. What are you valuing of that right now?
I couldn't answer that right now.
What are you guys valuing it?
I don't have an answer.
But we don't know because we didn't ask them.
You mean go to the company and say that or bid it that way?
Alls you got to do is bid it and say, here's what we have, bid it, give us an amount, a trade-in value. And if it looks fair and reasonable.
Get rid of it.
Because if you remember a while back, I asked about a tractor and they said it sold for 30,000. I brought 21,800 the other day. If, if somebody would have given us 30,000 on trade, we wouldn't have to mess around. We'd just get it on the new one. I just
Does selling it privately get you more money than trade though?
It seems so simple for purchasing to do that, but it must be more difficult, I think.
But I'm saying traditionally, I wondered, because what it is with vehicles.
Then we'd have a price point to compare it to. So if we did end up selling it, we'd have
Right. Put it on the gov for two weeks and see if it sells and if it doesn't, trade it.
It's an option. That's all I had. Thanks.
B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Old World Industries for caustic solution for the wastewater treatment plant. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to utility equipment for 52 valves. Fifteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. Sixteen are applications for beer and liquor licenses. And seventeen are boards, commissions, and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero thirteen is a motion appointing Michelle Pick to the Active Transportation
Where are your numbers coming from?
Yeah, I just noticed that too.
Well, I'm going, I'm reading them right as they come off.
No, we're off on the number a little bit.
Yeah, I understand we are. Thank you, Lisa.
That wasn't me.
I can get myself in trouble. You don't have to help. But anyway, we'll move forward here. All right. Sixteen is a motion appointing Michelle Pick to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee to complete the balance of a three-year term expiring December 31, 2022, in a position previously unfilled and reappointing Michelle Pick to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2025. I'll move that. Second.
Okay, I called the vote on these. She said, all right. Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Seventeen is a motion appointing or reappointing two of the following three applicants to the Airport Board of Trustees for three-year terms expiring June 30, 2022. And I would move Lawrence Christensen and Joe Cruz. Second.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Eighteen is a motion reappointing Barbara Sloniker to the Events Facility and Advisory Committee Board. I'll move that. Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I think I got this changed now. Nineteen is a motion reappointing Larry Obermeyer to the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll move that. Second.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Twenty is a motion appointing Sandy Kipson to the Senior Advisory Committee. I'll move that. Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Twenty is an ordinance vacating a Porsche PV Street. The petitioner is Robert Bertrand Revocable Trust. P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration approved, June 27, 2022. Somebody need to move second reading? I'll move that. There's a second?
Second.
You may use your voting panels.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, I voted wrong. I meant to hit the abstention button.
Did you mean to abstain?
I meant to abstain. I have a conflict of interest.
Oh, okay.
Record that. Passes three to
Two.
Zero to two. Mr. Moore and myself abstain, so we've got to go on to not do third reading. Nineteen, a hearing resolution approving plans and specifications for the Pierce Street Water Main Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenty, a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Andrew Avenue Utility Improvement Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Is there anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. I just did that, Andrew. I just did that. Twenty-four is a resolution approving a contract to HCI Construction for the Fire Station Aid Addition and Remodel Project. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Twenty-two is a resolution approving a contract to Winkler Roofing for the wastewater treatment plant roof re- What did I say? Twenty-five, I'm sorry. Twenty-five is a resolution approving a contract with Winkler Roofing for the wastewater treatment plant roof replacement project. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard? Passes five zero. Twenty-three is a resolution approving a letter of understanding with Woodbury County for the proposed jail site improvements projects, city utility costs. Move that. Second. I got questions. This is not having anything to do with dirt or anything else. This is just how much we're going to reimburse the city, the county, which Mid-America is reimbursing us for. Is that?
Correct. Gordon Farr can probably answer additional questions, but these are specific costs related to the 20 Freedom Improvements.
For the Mid-America?
Yes, because the county took care of bidding this portion.
Yes.
But then Mid-America is going to reimburse us and we're going to reimburse the county?
I believe we received the check today.
Teresa's not here. I didn't, I didn't hear whether we got the check or not. Gordon Farr, city engineer.
We, it was indicated to us last week that Mid-American had sent the check. It was en route to the city. So that's why we proceeded forward, because the county would like an LO signed indicating that they're going to receive the reimbursement. We had offered to have Mid-American reimburse the county directly and they elected not to proceed with that option. They wanted it to come through the city for reimbursement. I'm unsure.
Can't explain.
But they're for sure going to reimburse us.
I was told the check was in the mail.
I've heard the checks in the mail before in my life.
The checks coming in the mail from Mid-American, though.
Correct. And the items related to Mid-American for that site, the development agreement and the requested easement, those will be on the agenda next week. So if there's some in fact, some reason where the check does not arrive, those items that are requiring a vote could be deferred or deleted at that time.
These improvements for Mid-American are, they're a good deal for them and they've been very agreeable to the whole, the whole stretch. So there's no reason to think otherwise.
God only knows. We want to do everything we can to help Warren Buffett. He does so much to help our community, but
We're here to help.
Let that go today so we can get out of here.
I was going to say, I was late today by a couple of trades.
All right.
Feeling out of me.
Ready to vote?
Yep.
Mr. Moore abstains, pass five to zero. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens to be heard? If so, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Perzada. My address is 9327 Royal Way, Houston, Texas 77083. And I am here for the property 2626 Court Street. I'm representing a company called Imperial Reliance. I believe it was by the city ordered demolition of the property. And I was working with Mr. Darrell when I was contacted, and I just joined the company six months ago. And he asked me to do certain things, which I did within a week, to take care of the property from outside. And unfortunately, the second time, he asked for a architect to do the work what we needed. I already have a construction company, JJ Construction, who already gave us the estimate for about 150,000. Company is willing to spend the money. And the last email I received, since we already, over the time, 30 days, which he gave me, and unfortunately, I can't find any architect who is willing to work with us for now. So I'm just requesting a little extension on it for maybe about 30 days. Hopefully, I can either find somebody, because I'm also new in town. So that's all I'm requesting, for about 30 days for the property.
Are you unable to find a local architect or are you bringing one in?
Need an architect or engineer? I think you need an engineer.
Mr. Doug Rose, I believe his name was, who has worked in the city before. So I preferred him and he was busy at the time. So I don't think I'm going to bring anyone from outside, whoever locally nearby we can find. So that's what I'm requesting.
Jeff has something to add?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operate Manager. This is the Red Tag property that's located at 27th and Court, former gas station. The property owner did state that they have made some immediate repairs. There were some graffiti removal. There were some windows and some boarding up that needed to be done. So we appreciate that work that's been done. But the timeframe has been, has been up on the rest of the building. There are architects, I think, in town that would do the work. What we're looking for is the drawings to update the interior of the building, specifically in regards to accessibility for the bathrooms that are located in the convenience store. If the council did provide some type of direction for an extension, we would ask for a bond. And at this time, that amount is unknown. We'd like to continue to research what the demolition would cost. And we would like to obtain a bond in that amount. So if the work is not completed, we would have the authority to remove the building with that bond.
I thought the biggest problem with this building was the rear footings in that it was settling to the southwest corner.
Correct. And some of that work has already been done?
Yes, I would like to add something to it.
Go ahead.
Yes, there was a drop, I think, on the backside of the building, which you mentioned. And the company already spent 25,000 at that time. I submitted the pictures and all the other renovations which were done. At that time, changing of a bathroom was not added. So that contractor quit in the meantime. When I joined in, at that time, the architect request was done. So again, as I said, that this is not a delay from a company. Company has already approved the amount. I already have the contractor I stand by. It's just a matter of finding the architect or the engineer who's going to work on the property. The company already has 18 stores in past two years because of the COVID and lack of employees and all of this, it kind of put us behind.
Does anybody remember when we first delayed the demolition on the placard hearing? Which, was that in '21?
I think it's been multiple times. I think it was before '21.
I think it was '21 was the most recent one, though, that we said, okay, because we voted.
Yes, that might be the last one, yes, when I joined in.
Well, I'm in agreement with Jeff. We have them obtain a bond and
Has he posted any bond at all?
I don't believe so. I believe a previous owner had posted a bond and they're no longer involved. And so we would work with the new owner to clear that bond. Our initial estimates, if we were added to demolish the building as well as any removal of the tanks, could exceed between 80 to $100,000 if we had to do any underground work for tank removal.
This would be a situation where if the bond estimate, if staff can come up with the bond estimate, this would likely take additional council action to enter.
I was going to say, we wouldn't be able to do anything here.
Bring it back next week or something.
Direction can be given to staff to bring it back and put it on the agenda, but no action of the council can be taken related to an extension or an additional bond tonight. Just because it isn't on the regularly noted agenda.
Right, but we can't take a vote.
Yes, and I was known only on Friday evening, actually. So what should I do? What is my
So it sounds like you have at least a week, if we direct you one week. And in that week's time, you know, you could ask around or, you know, find an engineer or an architect firm that would be willing to work with you on that. And then also, within that week's time, city staff will look into what it would take for demolition to come up with an amount for a bond. And so then at next week, at this exact same time, you could come back and would be on the agenda. They would give their recommendation of how much a bond would be. You can tell us whether or not you were successful with an architect. And then we, as a council, can vote on it. And then it can move forward. Because right now, you coming to us, we can't vote on anything because it wasn't posted, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it. So
No worries.
The bond, the bond, does it mean like we have to pay for the bond or city acquires it? How does that?
No, you got to post cash. It's difficult to get a bond, probably. You got to post cash.
Okay.
Well, I can't think of a bond, but most bonding companies for demolition make you put up cash to get the bond. So you're putting up cash twice, or at least if you put it up with the city, you only have to put it up one time and not pay for a bond.
Okay.
And it would just be a portion of those demolition costs of that estimate.
See, the new buildup cost approximate, what they gave me was about 400 grand. And 150 is going to cost now to repair it. So
But you got 10 already.
Under the old owners, I believe there is a bond. I have to confirm that with Darrell. He had a conflict this afternoon, so wasn't able to be here. But what I'll do is I'll speak with Darrell in the morning. We'll give you a call and come up with the next step and determine what that bond should be.
Okay.
And again, as they mentioned, maybe within the next week, if we can assist you with working with any other architects, we can help with that.
I would appreciate that, yes. Excellent.
Jeff, does that give you time to do what you need to do?
A week would be a pretty short turnaround to prepare any of the document. But I would suggest two weeks would give us more time.
Is that okay with you? Will you still be in town?
Yeah, yeah, I live in Ames, so I'll drive back.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I thought if you're coming from Houston, man, that might be
No, no, I moved six months ago.
Might be a trip.
All right. So we'll look at it to get in two weeks then, rather than one.
So I don't have to be, next week meeting?
Right, two weeks.
Two weeks after, okay.
Work with them to make sure you get everything done.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Amir.
Thank you.
Name is Ryan Heisy, 2214 M Avenue. I'm here to address the issue of our property on 1416 Hamilton, where we have bums constantly in our, looting in our parking lot. They're also getting into trash, spreading it all over. I called the police department. They have not been able to do anything with this. Prior to this, Bo Bronger has addressed a couple of city council members, to my knowledge, over the last couple of years here about this issue. We're having more and more issues where employees and customers are having problems going outside of our business in the back, and they feel threatened by these people, which is starting to hurt my business. So I'm here to address something that we need to do, something to take care of these people that are looting, making extra work for us, like spreading trash all over. I'm just wondering what we can do besides calling the cops, because I can't be here at 2:00, 4:00 in the morning to watch this business 24/7. I'm wondering what we can do to go farther and do something finally.
Mr. Padmore, is that something you could talk to the chief about? Because I think, I think in the course of correspondence with Mr. Bronger, it's come to light, and maybe this has been going on for a couple of years, but, but what's come to light, for me anyway, is the, what's going on behind the building.
Yes, correct.
Before, it was out by the street public right-of-way.
We're having that also.
Where they're, where they're sitting there. And that's, well, that's a little bit tougher just because of the right-of-way and whether they have a right, if anybody has a right to be where they are with, if they're on the sidewalk, not with their feet.
They don't have the right to hang.
Have the right to hang their feet and their ankles and their legs out over the curb. And, but we don't arrest them, but they don't have that right.
Yeah, but what?
So the issue we're having right now is they're going behind the businesses.
But we have some as drivers.
Tear up the trash, um, and then also, like you say, they're laying in the grass, sleeping in random spots where it's very, it's becoming an issue where we're having people come in and say, we don't wanna come back because of these issues, and that's really, we're a small business, we can't keep.
Ryan, which business do you own?
What's that?
Which business is yours?
Classic Cuts.
Okay.
We own one on Hamilton and one on Singing Hills. So this is the only one we have an issue with, is this, this property.
Right.
So.
So can we do that, can we take that up with the chief?
Well, and I would say too.
I called them, and I, I, they said pretty much, I gotta sit there and wait around for somebody to do something. And it's like, I, I don't know what they expect me to do.
Well, but, and you're, but you're talking about security in the middle of the night as well.
Yeah, I mean, well, what am I supposed to do? I mean, the latest, the biz, the 12 o'clock, the Domino stays open till 12 o'clock. And they say they don't see anybody till after they close down, they walk out. They might see somebody around 12:30, 1 o'clock, and further on, they say, this is when they suspect the issue is coming in. Since I've talked to all the other tenants in here, that's what we're coming up with, so.
Well, we definitely know it's been an ongoing problem, especially on the corner of.
Yes.
Uh, West Parkway and, and Hamilton, that they stand there. Um, a couple of years ago, there was lots of garbage piled up, a lot. Um, we requested a new trash can be put near there to kind of help, but not directly on that corner, which is, it has helped. I mean, I know they dig in it, but it's usually on the ground, at least we can get it picked up. But we totally get it, but they know their rights as to where they can stand on that right-of-way. So it's hard for us to just send PD down to say, you know, clear them out of there, they can't be standing there, because they definitely know their rights, but we can.
You can send PD, can make trips through there at night.
Yes, absolutely, I'm just talking about in the daytime.
Their rights are excluding everybody else's rights is the bad part.
Well, it, it feels that way, but yeah, we, we, we can talk to them about making some more rounds, you know, going around the backside a little bit and kind of seeing what's going on, and that's what the city manager.
My biggest concern is our employees, that, you know, how, how finding people right now is just stupid. And, uh, I don't want those girls to leave.
Right.
You know, that we've become like family, we take care of them, and we do everything we can for them. I don't want those girls to get hurt.
Right, want everybody to feel safe.
We get the neighborhood police officer, I don't know who it is in that jurisdiction, out there to see the, this gentleman.
Well, and we also have a committee, we've spoke about this a few meetings back. There's a committee that's been working on this and kind of addressing some of the issues, but it's good for them to know areas of concern or where people are having issues. And I know we have representatives here that are listening, and we'll be able to bring them back to their committee as well.
A while back, then also, so you go in that alley behind where the, where we're having the issue kind of mostly.
Yeah.
Behind there, there's a tent, they've been sleeping back in there too. So they, they crawl back in there, and then they sleep all night, or they, they'll be laying in the middle of the alley come morning time when the girls come in.
But that's Bronger's problem there, because that's a private alley.
Okay, so that, so that alley is private, so nobody should be back there, is that correct?
Right.
That, I know that's.
And we can enforce it necessarily.
I checked once, because they, they were, Paul was complaining about cars going through the backside, and they, they put barricades up, because that's, that is a private alley, that's no longer a city street.
Yep.
So yes, you, I mean.
But then you can.
Bo and, and Paul can enforce that themselves.
So pretty much, if we see, it, it comes back to, if we see somebody, then we have to call the cops, is the issue.
I think you could probably move them from the alley. But anyway, to answer your question, I don't know, let the lawyer answer, cause.
Sure, and, and the chief.
I'd handle it differently.
The chief can address that as well. It, there are some signs that could probably be posted in the area, and then chief can probably.
Did that.
Maybe there are signs.
We've already, we've went to these other extents, so now it's like, okay, what's our next step? We're gonna go, and that's what I'm trying to address, is like, we continually have this problem. It's really starting to affect my business, other businesses, and people's safety, so that's why I'm.
Yeah, if, if, if they're posted in that, then they can call the police, because they're trespassing, to answer your question.
Then how do you stand there and wait for somebody?
Well, if they're sleeping there.
In the morning, yes.
Yeah, so, all right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. O'Kane?
Nothing this week.
Really? Okay, Julie?
Well, I wanna say that council visited at Unity in the Community this weekend, and it was really a well-attended, well-put-together event. Um, the statement that I kept reading about it afterwards was, "We are better together." And so I just wanted to say that again, we are better together, our community is, and not only better, but stronger. So I enjoyed that, I look forward to it next year, and that's pretty much all I have.
Alex?
Yeah, I would just echo that, it was nice to go to Unity in the Community. Um, I haven't been able to be in, in what it feels like quite some time. Um, and so it was great to see that and be a part of that. I would just really wanna thank the organizers that put that on, and the members of staff that take the time to be able to do those types of things, cause I think it really does go a long way toward community policing and just really embracing the overall message that we are better together, to echo Julie's sentiments. So yeah, I would just thank the organizers. The second thing that I wanted to thank was, we haven't had a meeting since, um, Saturday in the park, and just wanted to say just how well organized that, that is, and just a, a great thing for our community. It welcomes people from all over the country, and so it's pretty exciting whenever that can come around. And I know it's a lot of work, um, I'm sure they've already maybe exchanged emails about what next year is going to be. So just thank all of those individuals that were involved with that. Um, I also did receive other complaints and citizens that have been concerned about homelessness and some of the things that we're doing to address. I appreciate the work of the committee, um, that's working on addressing some of those things,